Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board of Education Work Session. This is a public meeting that is being videotaped for the county citizens to review on QACTV-7, a local cable station. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence for the victims from Florida's massacre. The agenda is available on the phone. During this work session, we ask that you turn off your cell phones and/or pagers and hold personal conversations and comments outside of the meeting room. We will now stand and be led in the pleasure of these by President Jennifer Jordan.
(Inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
As permitted by the Section 3-305B of the general provision article of the annotated Code of Maryland, I move that we go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining, two items for personal, two personal items for SES principal, director of human resources position, and one administrative function item.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote to go into closed session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Welcome back to the open session, Queen Anne's County Board of Education Work Session. At this time, I need a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Motion.
I have a motion and I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The first item in open session would be the presentations and it would be the budget for fiscal year 2017.
Okay. Well, when we left the last meeting, I think we had looked at a couple of scenarios for budget, hoping that we would somehow find the dollars that we do not have to accommodate our budget with just the $937,000 that we got from county government. So you had sent us back to look at athletic fees and also to check on a particular problem that I think one of you, Mrs. Harper maybe, had noticed in the newspaper where Sudlersville, town of Sudlersville, had increased its cost for water and sewer. Given that, Robin did call and find out that that had been increased. So, in terms of that and in terms of going back to look at if there was anything else we could reduce from our budget, we revised our three, or we revised the two scenarios we gave you, plus added a third one. And if you don't, if you would just allow me to show the three, then I'll be open for any questions and hopefully they'll be clear. I think they will be. So the first one's going to be the scenario where we talked about the fact that we had $937,000 from this, from the county, and we had our state funding, and that that was going to be able to accommodate the pension and then retiree healthcare. And then we showed you, we just sort of backed dollars out, we showed you the money that we had for $57,000 worth of cost of doing business, which had to do with several increases in fees we had. To that, you'll notice in bold that we have added sewer fees as 5A, town of Sudlersville, and it's increased our cost by another $20,000. So essentially, we have $77,000 in cost of doing business that we're going to have to accommodate. And then we had on this particular scenario that we would reduce class size in two, or we needed to have two classes. This is the one that we put in the budget for just two positions, which you had asked for. One was to reduce Sudlersville's fifth grade class size, and the other was to be able to get the physics teacher for science at Queen Anne's County High School. And then you had also asked for the athletic trainers' contracts be put in there. And you had technology staff. Well, in the course of looking at this particular scenario, since that time, Mr. Paluski, who was reorganizing some of the staff up in his division, was able to reduce by one sec administrative assistant, and he can put aside the dollars for that technology staff person. So we took that off of here. So it's just showing you what's left that we have as a cost. And we had said, we recommended $610,000, and that would be a percent across the board for all staff. And you had said you didn't know if you really liked that option and for us to look at something that would really look at more compensation for staff. So does that, remember that particular one? All right. So that was scenario one. We just revised it to show the technology piece out of it and to show the sewer fees on it. So then the second proposal we made to you, or scenario we gave you, was to show you the state and county funding again, but then to show you all of those costs out of there. But then we went back to our budget, and we took most things back down to the level that they had been in the budget without the increases. And in addition to that, we had taken money off of materials of instruction for staff, and we continued to reduce costs in our budget so that we thought we had gotten closer to the point you wanted for our staffing. But you'll see from that, at the bottom line, we still had a shortfall of $350,000. That's where we ended our conversation last time. And said to you, the only way to take care of that was to really look at cutting four positions from the elementary classrooms. And I told you how that would look, and I was mentioning to you that, for instance, at Ken Island Elementary, second grade would go from 20 to 24 students. Or Centerville Elementary, from second, a second grade would go from 19 to 22. Or that there were a couple of classes at Mata Peak that we could look at that were in third and fourth grades. It would go from 18 up to 24 and 25 students. There are different places we could reduce, but it was always taking it above the level that they had been in the past number of years, where we had worked so hard to get them. And then we also had said to you, if you didn't want to do the elementary positions, we could consider the world language program at the middle school. And you all had said you really didn't like that. So I've just taken that off. This is my revised second scenario. So out of this, it shows that we've added to it the sewer fees, but we've also reduced the positions at the middle school from that, and we still have this shortfall that we have to make up, which the only alternative there is reducing by four elementary classroom teachers.
Are you counting in that the, the fifth grade teacher at SMS that you have over on scenario one?
And am I, Robin? Because I don't see that on here, so I'm going to assume it's not.
Because if I'm correct, I said that if, that was only going to be one year, that I felt that we did not have to hire another teacher for that, because it will only be one year that that influx is in there.
The only concern I have is that that bubble of kids is going to go through. I don't know what it's going to mean in terms of middle school when they get there, but I don't know. I mean, maybe middle school classes can-
Okay. Because I, I wasn't okay with that, because I just felt that, because next year's class is like only two-thirds of what is going there this year.
It is, correct.
So that's, that's a lot of money right there.
Well, if we think you can tolerate 30 students in a class-
I thought that, I thought that we said though there would be 24 or 25 kids.
28 or 30. No, that's, not Sudlersville. Sudlersville's fifth grade, unless we are able to put another teacher there, we'll be in the upper twenties, if not 30.
The other thing is she, and that she can re, as I understand, you can reevaluate next year-
Sure, the next year, right.
And if that bubble moves up, then you move up, you know, sixth grade.
We'd move the person up, or we could maybe not, maybe we'd be able to absorb it and not need it. You're absolutely correct that in the upcoming elementary portion, we will not use it.
Right.
But for that one, they do need it. But Robin, are those two positions in there or are they not? I forget.
They are not.
So we'd still have to take six.
Right.
Those two plus these four.
Those two plus the four.
So this scenario is really showing the reduction of six, because we didn't show the other two teachers. So it's still doing what we had suggested, which was taking two of these positions that I just read to you. Which, you know, and you know, and you know I'm big on class size. I think, I think that we could go in Centerville Elementary School from second grade, they could go from 19 to 22 this year. It wouldn't be, it would not be the best thing, but it wouldn't be horrible.
I don't like a fifth grade having 30 kids.
I don't either. That's why I would say I'd rather do that.
That's one position.
If we're going to be reducing staff. Now, the one thing I would like to make clear is, as soon as I knew we might have to reduce staff, we put a hold on any elementary positions that were open, so that we have enough open positions that if we reduce staff, nobody loses their job. So these five people will go into other elementary positions, and they may not love where they have to go. And it'll be based on probably the last and the first, you know, whoever is youngest in years on staff. Usually you-
The non-tenure.
Usually you ask for volunteers first, because if somebody lives in the area and would, would not mind moving to a different school, and you know which school it is, which we would know, then we ask that. But if there's not, then we often go back to seniority.
Could you get a number for me for how many kids?
I had a number before for the fifth grade.
And there's no decrease in pay either.
But I'll give you a number. Excuse me?
There's no decrease in pay, say if somebody's going from Ken Island to Sudlersville or Churchill, there's no decrease. Okay, I'm just, you know, just make sure.
Teachers, it's based on their years of experience and their degrees.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to how many kids will be, would be there.
I'm just about 99% sure it was close to 30, but I don't, I don't think I brought that paper with me from Sudlersville. All right.
That's fine.
So if I could just tell you the third scenario, so you just have it to think about. Because right now, you have a scenario of, of offering just a col, because you can't afford to offer anymore. Or you have reduced staff so that you can compensate, because you said your two priorities were keeping class sizes at a relatively low level and also compensating staff. And, you know, I remind you, we are behind a step still, although there are other systems that are behind a step as well, but we are still behind a step. We've been trying to make them up. We've made them all up but one. But if we don't, if we aren't able to give teachers a step this year, then we'll be behind two. So, you know, right away, you're starting to reverse the process we had. But if we look at number three, I had a conversation, and you'll notice at the very top of this chart, that it says there's an additional revenue of $400,000. You directed me at the end of the last meeting to go back and talk to our county government and explain the situation and how dire a situation this was, that we would be having to reduce staff. And would it be possible for us to have the additional dollars put in our budget this year? Because we were pretty confident that they had not actually finalized their budget. So I have been contacting them one by one, and I have had tentative, and I can only say tentative, because until you're there and you see a vote, it's only tentative. But I've had agreement from three of the commissioners that they would vote for an increase for our, for our county funding. And put that $400,000 there. They said they had not finalized their budget at this point, and that they're, they would hopefully be able to let me know something tomorrow. So I have a different kind of meeting with them tomorrow, but I'm going to ask this question as a part of that meeting. And if they did say yes, then that would mean that we would be able to fund each of the positions that we had in the budget, the two that we need, plus the contractual positions we had in there for the athletic trainers. Not the technology person, right, Robin? Because the technology is still a piece of what Mr. Paluski gave back. So we'd be able to cover everything by doing that, which to me is the best of both worlds. It's still making the cut 10% to materials of instruction and all of the other areas. We had non-public placements we had reduced, and we had also cut course reimbursement. We had cut some of our professional development monies. We've cut anywhere we thought we could make it work for us. But we still were short dollars. So this way, that $400,000 would really give us some opportunities to accomplish, at least at a minimal level, what you had asked. So those are our three scenarios.
And this takes away two elementary students.
This does not take away anyone.
No people at all?
No.
Okay. All right. I misunderstood that.
Correct, Robin?
It would still collapse the one at the high school.
It would still collapse the one at the high school. We would need really more than $400,000 to make the one at the high school not have to be collapsed. Now, from my perspective, they haven't offered computer science yet, but it's one of the pathways we said we wanted to start. So it delays us starting computer science at Queen Anne's County High School, which we do have started at Ken Island High School. So then we're going to be back to, you know, trying to have equity among our schools. But in the course of everything, it saves a number of positions that we thought we were going to have to reduce.
Provided that they all agree.
Provided that we get the $400,000. If we don't get it, we are at one of the other two scenarios, or something else that you may want us to look at. Now, the final thing I asked Robin to bring was the piece you asked about for athletic-
Pay-to-play.
Pay-to-play, thank you. The pay-to-play. So she can show you what you would gain in terms of that. And then I, I didn't ask Sid to be prepared to do this, but I know that if he could just share briefly some of the concerns with the pay-to-play and what we would have to make sure we were trying to accommodate. I'm just thinking about making sure we had some, some people stepping up to help us with students that didn't have the costs for the fees and all that. But you remember enough of what it was, continuity and all that. All right.
Okay. So basically, what I have here, and I can't get it all on the screen, but we have seven years' worth of actual revenues and expenditures for the athletic budget. If we go over here on this side, you can see the top line is the gate receipts. The second line are the student activity fees, which are the fees that we charge the students to pay to participate.
Plus fees to get into the games.
Yes.
Yes?
That was part of the gate receipts.
That's what I'm saying. Oh, that's part of the gate. Okay.
And then we had the other, last two are donations. We, the first couple of years that we did the pay to participate, we did have some people who stepped up in the community and made donations to cover some of the costs for students that were unable to pay. And that's the last two. So-
That the boosters that-
Sometimes the boosters did, but we had some, we had sent out letters to a lot of different organizations, and they submitted some donations to us.
These are mostly businesses in the community.
Okay.
And so if you look at what the expenditure, what the revenues were, gate receipts, you can see we started out in 2008, '09, we're around 72. We peaked in 2011, '12, which was the year that we were charging $2 per student to get into a game, and we were charging parents $7 to get into games. And I think we did that for two years. And you can see in the second year that we were charging the $7, that it kind of, the revenues kind of dropped off a little bit. And in 2013, '14, I believe, we had a couple of teams that were on their way to state, so our gate receipts increased that year. And gate receipts, each year vary depending on what you have. If you have a really good team, if you have a team that's, you know, really doing very well, then they'll draw a lot more crap. So gate receipts, the other part with gate receipts is they go directly back into the athletic budget to pay for umpires, referees, uniforms, supplies for the, for the games and those types of things. But you can see on 2011, '12, '13, '12, '13, and '13, '14, all three of those years, we collected activity fees or play-to-pay fees. The first year, we collected 143, and then it dropped off to 133, and that's what we collected for the next two years. So if you were to reinstitute that, I think that would be the number that you would be looking at possibly collecting, is around 130.
And so that would cover the cost of a teacher plus maybe your, but does it have to go back into athletics? No.
No.
Okay. So it would cover the cost of a teacher plus maybe contractual employee. But Sid, what were the issues that we had with it?
What we'd have to think about is, obviously, the farm students would be exempt. The other part, we had a strong donation system back then that was, you know, helping families out that were also struggling but didn't meet that farm's threshold. After that, we did have in place, if you had multiple siblings in a family, and then also if you performed multiple sports throughout that year. I can't think of the exact-
What we reduced the fee-
Figures, but they were reduced on that. So those are the couple items that we'd have to figure out how we would want to before we rolled it out.
And getting the information out early, so it would be a decision we'd want to make as soon as possible to get out to families so that-
August 10th is the first day for fall sports.
Right. So those are the options that you had to discuss.
August 10th.
We want, I feel about that one.
Yes.
I am not for pay-to-play. Now, I am for, did you not say that the students are not paying to go into games?
Correct.
And I am for students having to pay to go into games. I, I don't have a problem with that.
So that's part of the gate fees.
So, yeah, I mean, I definitely, I think that they should start paying again. I don't have a problem with that, but-
The teachers are still free, though. The teachers-
If they have a badge, generally, they get free.
Well, the idea was to try and get more of our staff there to help monitor, you know, if you have a staff person there, you feel like you've got somebody that knows the students.
They were paying $2, the students, to get in?
They used to.
I think it was $2.
Yeah, they used to.
And what, yeah, then we would charge more for the parents.
Well, parents, when it got to be $7, and I stood in those lines, people could never understand why we were $7 when everybody else in the state seemed to be $5. But they stood, because they liked their games.
They also had, Ken Island had a $50 family fee.
Yes, they did. They went to the family piece. Yeah.
Which I think both high schools-
Both high schools did.
Eventually, yeah. So how, what would you, how would you like to approach what we have? Because you, you really do have to, we can't assume we're going to get $400,000 tomorrow. I would like to assume that, and it would make life very easy, but if we do, that would be one, if that, yes, everything's great. But if not, what?
Well, I'm not for a fifth grade teacher at Sudlersville Middle School.
Hey, Sid, like-
Now, I want to see, I want to see how many kids would be per classroom, but I'm not for doing that, not when it's going to go back down the following year.
All right.
So.
Well, I am, because I don't want to, I don't want upper twenties for a fifth grade. I don't want to, I mean, you may not know the exact name, but he said it's at least in the upper twenties. I think our priority, my priority is the size of class. Position, you can slide for the next year. I mean, you're going to have a problem in sixth grade, so this bubble goes through.
Well, essentially, yeah. I slid one position. So the science physics teacher position, essentially, we've wiped out because Mrs. Wilhelm is going to find that position. So we are now looking for one position, and that's saying that maybe not to look for that. But the only, the only caution is that is one of our most needy schools. So, you know, we want to make sure we continue to keep class sizes small there if we can.
And I agree with that, but what about the, the school goes, 2016, '17 goes Title One, totally Title One? I mean, is there not money in that budget to find that, that one-year teacher, or?
It's, we've, we've done once before, a long time ago. We did something with a class-sized position, but I don't know if that's a legitimate piece out of Title One anymore or not. I'd have to go check.
I think that that should be something we should check into.
But we can, we can check into that.
Yeah.
I think where we would run into our problem, if we provide teachers at all of our other fifth-grade classrooms to have 20 or 24 students in the classroom, and we are taking funds out of our Title One grant in order to maintain that same ratio at that school, I'm fearful that we would be considered subplanting.
No, you're right. And what I forgot was, there's a thing called a comparability report, and we have to show class size at every school and the number of teachers, the kinds of teachers. If the Title One schools have fewer teachers or more kids per class, we have to resolve that. That is, that is part of that comparability report, which I did forget about. So-
But if that, is that, if, is that only for, I mean, if it were a teacher for only one year, does that-
I think there's other ways to look at supports for that school. So they might be able to look at a kind of teacher that nobody else has, like an additional reading teacher that would work with that grade level. They could look at something like that, that would maybe pull students out, and I don't know if that's the best model, but I'm just saying, or an intervention teacher, although we have intervention teachers, but an additional person-
I just think it's something that we should probably look at. I mean, let's, I don't want to be single people, but you know-
Right. It would definitely have to be a different type of teacher than just a regular classroom teacher.
Right.
Because we supply that at-
Well, because my question also there is, is where are we going to put that teacher?
Well, that we've worked out, because they're taking one of their built labs, which they no longer need, because now they have their Chromebooks.
Right.
And they're dismantling it, I believe.
Three of them.
Three of them. So he's going to have three additional classrooms, so.
I ask a question about Title One. As you were indicating that if that school goes totally Title One-
It is going.
It is going. So isn't there just an X amount of dollars that's given to our county regardless, and then it gets divvied up among the Title One schools? It's not like we get more money because it's a-
No. Well, we're getting more Title One money, but I don't think we're getting that much more, because they're all Title One. But for instance, Graysonville is now going to be school-wide. They got a supplemental kind of grant because of special, because of their scores on special ed for Park. So now they get to be school-wide Title One, and they get additional dollars in this extra grant that she's now written.
And when did that happen? I mean, when-
It just happened.
Oh, it just did? Okay. Because we haven't even seen the Park numbers, so.
Well, that's what you'll see here, but, but the state has the Park numbers and identifies schools that are called.
So they did it. Okay. And then what about Churchill? What about Churchill? It's just a half?
Churchill is still-
Marshall?
Targeted.
It's not called, targeted, thank you. Targeted.
That's the buzzword, targeted?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just asking, because I remember you saying before, we only got X amount of dollars and we had to spread them.
We have dropped schools before, but right now, as they've looked at the dollars, they don't really feel they need to drop. They feel they have adequate dollars. And what they also do is look at the most number of students. So our two Sudlersville schools would have to have many more dollars than Churchill, especially, but even more than Graysonville, because Graysonville doesn't have the same level of poverty that Sudlersville does, elementary or middle, middle school, even though it's not as high as elementary. What gets turned in as, as poverty is still higher than the other schools. Thank you.
If, if the class, let me just make it clear, if the class size, the next year went down, so, I mean, I mean, if we didn't have a need for that extra position, then you could use that at the middle school for the computer position. There is a lot you could do.
Well, it would depend. Title One's very-
It wouldn't be a Title One. I'm talking about us trying to budget for a-
Oh. Just a position.
We're looking at to get that position to keep that class size down from 28 kids.
Well, usually somewhere in the county, somebody's leaving and we need to absorb a position. So I'll just use Ken Island Elementary as an example. We have sometimes had eight kindergarten teachers there, and then the next year, we don't have enough kindergarten students to really warrant small classes. And I'll say, okay, well, I noticed that this school has more kids coming this year. We're going to take one of Ken Island's teachers and move them. So that's the same kind of thing that could happen with the Sudlersville position.
That would be real-
You just have to always be watching what's happening across the county.
Being at Sudlersville is also, you know, they have, you know, special issues in that school. I really can't see lower than making that 28 kids. It would be so hard for a teacher.
I do have to tell you that, let me see, Graysonville will tell you the same thing, because they have, you know, they have the top of the kids and they have the, the most poverty. So they have two extreme areas. It's very diverse. And then I just had an email from Centerville Elementary that said, oh, I can't believe you would talk about taking a second grade position. you would talk about taking a 2nd grade position. Do you realize the kinds of students that are in the class? We have some really needy students that have additional supports, and if you put any more students in those classrooms to make them all 22, there isn't going to be an opportunity to give the kind of support we need to the students that have specific needs. I mean, everybody- I understand all that, and I know you all do, too. We've finally gotten class sizes where we like them, and to not be able to keep them there is really a problem.
So, we're betting on, hopefully, that the commissioners will-
We're hoping that they really mean, the three that said they would vote for us, that they really will vote for us, to have the additional dollars for the very purpose we just talked about, to keep us from having to expand our class sizes. But you all have to really talk about, if they don't, what would you like us to do? Or do you want to come back again?
So, we're comfortable with that scenario of getting the 400?
Yeah, I think we're all comfortable with that. That would be great if we do.
Okay, so, we're done with that one. Now, we have to say, what if we don't?
What if you don't?
Yeah.
Well, if we do get the 400, you've said clearly what you want in your budget.
Right.
So, that's what we've accommodated.
Right.
So, that's answered. It's if we don't, how do you want us to accommodate that you want this? How are we going to make that happen? And that, all we have left, you've heard me say 100 million times, 86% of your budget is people, and there is nowhere else to take it. 90% salaries and benefits, I think. I mean, you just have nowhere else to take it. It's what it is.
And that's even without doing the collective bargaining piece?
Correct.
I guess I would be more in favor of the scenario, too. And that's the taking the 10% off of materials and instruction and that whole scenario.
Okay.
Which one is that one do?
Well, that's scenario two. What we would still have to lose, we'd have still to reduce-
Four spots.
Six class- five classroom positions. Well, actually not. If we're not going to do Sudersville, well, you don't- you haven't really agreed on that.
Which one loses the least amount of positions?
Number one. Number one loses the least number of positions.
That's with the 400, though.
Or figure away-
No, three is with the 400.
Okay.
Yeah. Or we can't fully implement-
Scenario number one?
Scenario number one just has a cost of living across the board.
And that doesn't lose any staff?
No, doesn't lose any staff. Scenario two, you could just talk about having our negotiator go back and talk about how they could use the number of dollars that are available to try to accommodate what you're asking.
So, can I- that's good.
Without asking it.
Under- under number two, you have all these reductions-
Those have to come out.
They have to come out regardless.
Right.
Okay, so, you're just showing us where you're reducing the dollars?
We have gotten you down to 300. We're down to a shortfall of $351.
$51,000?
Yes, $351,000, I'm sorry, yes. I wish it were only $351,000.
Yeah. We'd make that work.
We'd make that work.
And Robin would have rounded up $352,000.
Now, we're trying to talk about how to come up with $351,000.
Correct.
How do we do?
Come up with it or say we don't have it.
I, um-
Which we don't.
I'm all for the athletic trainers, but if we don't have the money to do the negotiations, then I'm for taking them out.
Right.
I mean, $60,000.
Well, and you also said, Mrs. DiMaggio, to reduce the Sudersville position.
Yes.
And I told you that even though it's not here, that Mrs. Wilhelm called me this week and said she could reduce the piece for computer science.
Right.
So, that's- now, we're down to only having to lose four positions, not six. Plus, we could take one of those off, maybe a little bit, if we took the $60,000 out.
Right.
Just trying to- the least number of classroom positions you'd have to reduce.
I'm not happy with taking any of them out, but-
You know, in the future, I think we need to start looking at, though, if, especially with like some of the AP courses, because I know they have like the least amount of kids in them.
They do.
Maybe having some online AP courses.
We can do that. The only thing is, you still have to have somebody, if you're doing AP online, well, I'd have to look at how it's done, Mr. Pulisic will, because there are some stipulations about how that counts as a credit. It has to be 80%. You teach part of it, which means you have to have a teacher. It could be between the schools.
That's what I'm saying, like a satellite, yeah.
Somebody will do that kind of thing. So, you've been talking about that already.
How many- how many kids are in the AP classes?
Well, it depends on some of the, like, English might have many more than some of the upper-level, I'll say an upper-level math, which is probably not true, might have 10 or 12.
Calculus, AB and A-
Yeah, might have 10.
AB and AC.
12.
Yeah, they don't- EC, they don't have as many.
We have said the limit's going to be 15, and we try to hold that, but by the time we get the schedule, and they're trying to make that schedule work, and they're only going to lose eight periods, then they go ahead and spread it out because they don't want to lose- they don't have enough to lose a teacher, and they need the teacher to be teaching each period, so then it's back to, well, we'll just spread this out and make two classes, and then they become smaller. But there are art ones, there are a number of them that are smaller. They're-
How many kids do we have taking AP classes this year?
I can't-
No?
I was going to say, it's a couple hundred, but I don't know how many.
Well, I just know that, like, sometimes at that, like-
At both schools or just one?
I think at Ken Island, do you know, Dave? I'm going to say it's more than 150 kids, probably a couple hundred kids at Ken Island, at least that many at Queen Anne's. I'd say that many at each.
It would be nice to have Christine Schindler look at it, through the digital wave, to see if we could do, you know, one teacher at one of the two schools and have them-
We know we can do that.
Going in, going in through smart boards.
Our county's doing that. Broadcast, which is one way to do it, where you could actually be at Ken Island, and the student is at Queen Anne's in a classroom, being able to, you know, interact with the teacher. There's a lot of different ways in which that can be delivered.
That'd be interesting to see.
Well, and Baltimore County, I think, has been doing it for many, many years, but here was the downfall. We tried it once, and the downfall was the group that has the assistant and the camera wasn't as engaged as the group that had the teacher. Then we started having the teacher spend X number of days at each school so that they could identify with the teacher.
I'm sorry I brought it up, because we're getting out of-
That's okay. But it really is a very important piece, because there are ways to work it out.
Yeah, it is, because, I mean, not to say that the AP classes are very important, but if you only have 300 kids out of 2,400, 2,500 kids taking AP classes, I mean, there's some- we've got to think of another way to do it.
But that's only out of the juniors and seniors, and maybe an occasional sophomore. We have mostly just our juniors and seniors taking them. I'll get you actual numbers.
Yeah, that'd be- I'd be interested in knowing that.
Okay. All right, but back to what are we cutting? So, I'm going to- what I'm thinking I'm hearing you say, hear you saying is, scenario two, get it down to as few positions as possible to have to move. They're going to be elementary if we have to move them, and I'll look at where it has the least impact on a class size, which is only estimated at this point, because until kids register, and I see what actually shows up, but we have a couple that'll only go to 22 and 21, so one, they're both at Centerville Elementary, unfortunately. But we also could look at Mata Peak, which 24 and 25 in a 4th and a 3rd and 4th grade isn't unheard of, because Kennard has that now.
Yeah, my daughter's had it, and it's the whole way through.
Right, right. So, I mean, I'll look at the ones where it's more equitable if we have to do them.
Fine with that. I'd also be up for maybe modifying, as we discussed, part of the compensation.
Okay.
Not omitting it, but modifying it.
Okay. What, to collective bargaining?
Yeah, delays and stuff, yeah.
All right.
That piece.
So, are we voting on something now? I mean, can we?
Well, we can make a motion to accept one scenario, and then if it does not happen, we could say that then we would have a fallback scenario.
Right, A and B. I got it.
Or a comeback scenario. If you feel that there's too much-
If it doesn't happen, then we could come back to-
There's too much in play.
Yeah. If you feel that we don't really have a good enough handle on what we'd have to cut at this point.
But we have 17 days to make that.
Correct. You'd have to be before July. We have to have a budget, June 30th. Robin has to have a budget.
What do your schedules look like the week of the 27th through the 30th?
And it could be just for an hour, not even that. We don't need it.
I will not be in town the 27th, so. The week prior to that, I'm good, but the week-
Robin's out, I think. Is that the week you're out?
The 20th through the 24th or whatever, that you're out. Okay, so, we're looking at 28, 29, or 30?
Like, earlier you do is better. So, can anybody do the 28th?
I can do the 28th.
It could be whatever hour you want. We'll just make it work.
You don't have to worry about the kids, because-
Right, no, I'm good. I'm okay.
First thing?
Okay, 28.
Okay, so, what would you like- what would you like that to be?
As early as you can.
9:00 AM?
9:00.
9 o'clock, okay.
All right. If we need it.
Right.
If tomorrow they approve the $400,000.
Provided.
And you're going to accept scenario three.
Yes.
That we gave you.
Yes.
Which has all those cuts in the budget itself, but no positions are cut.
Right.
Except the collapse of the one at the high school.
Except the collapse of the one at the high school.
Okay. So, I need a motion to accept scenario three, which is the county funding additional funds to support our budget. If the county commissioners do not fund our request, then we need to reconvene on June 28th at 9:00 AM.
At 9:00 AM.
So, moved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote to accept scenario three for the proposed budget, the county funding additional funds. If the county commissioners do not fund the request, we reconvene on June 28th at 9:00 AM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, next on the agenda is the textbook series, English Language Arts.
We ask Mrs. Vides to come, and the only reason we're doing this at a work session is we have to get things out on display, so she would never be able to get them ordered before they need them. Pence, the discussion, Mrs. Vides.
Hi, thank you for having me. I sent you a PowerPoint about our process, just to give you some background, but much like when I was here last June, and we worked through our middle school textbook adoption. Our high school textbooks, we knew last year really needed to be replaced badly, so we started the process early in the fall. Thank you. And invitation went out to about 22 teachers and administrators, and we began looking. We had presentations from several textbook companies, and not surprisingly, our high school teachers honed in on the same two series that our middle school teachers had chosen, and like the middle school, piloted both, because we really wanted to get their feedback from using the textbooks, not just looking through them and looking at the table contents, but using them with children. And so, we went through a brief pilot with the Pearson, a pilot with the Hoot and Mifflin, and then teachers evaluated, and I put results of the evaluation with all their comments in that PowerPoint, but they overwhelmingly chose Pearson. So, I'm here tonight to ask that we adopt the Pearson textbook for the 2016-17 school year. In the quote that I have, or the given, Mrs. Vassal, and in the money listed there on the evaluation form, that includes, as I've again outlined in the presentation, that includes a three-year student consumable, so that would be three years of students at all grade levels, 9 through 12, the teacher resources, obviously, and then the digital component, which is a pretty large, well-thought-out digital component. So, as I said, teachers were very happy. Each selection in this series begins with a really super-engaging video for students, so they're drawn into an essential idea or question through video. They have a very nice kind of roundtable discussion about the video and the essential points in the literature. Then they read as a whole group, do small group activities, and then go to individual activities. So, there's this gradual release of responsibility with the students, and teachers really like that. And they had a lot of really superior English language learner resources as well.
Can I ask, does this fit into the price tag of the budget that we're just working on?
We have. We were allocated in our capital budget next year $550,000 towards textbooks.
Do we have any more textbooks coming up that we- we had those two that we're looking to adopt?
Right, the two, quantitative literacy and computer science. Those are actually in the FY '16, so those are getting ready to, yep, we're getting ready to move forward and purchasing those.
So, they were already paid for this year?
They will be. They'll be without of capital funds currently, correct.
So, this one stays in the-
Will come out next year's capital budget.
Are we looking at any other ones, do you think? Anything coming up the pike other than this?
Well, this will be- this is in the largest one, certainly, and this really adds now to the continuum that Lee and her staff have been working on. She started with the middle school piece last year, and then, at the same time, we started with a new elementary reading series, and now we're going to add to the high school component. So, we talked about that alignment piece. We're really starting to put the right-aligned resources now, pre-K through 12th grade.
But weren't we also talking about a new 3rd, 4th, and 5th science coming up? Or was that-
Right, that will be in- that will be in the following year.
Okay.
So, not to implement this year, yes.
I think I knew there was another set coming up, okay. Because we already did the math last year.
Right.
Okay.
That just never stops.
It does.
Math goes on and on.
Okay. Any other questions about the textbook series? Then we need a motion-
To put it on review.
To put the Pearson textbook series for school year 2016-17 on review.
So, moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote to put the Pearson textbook series for the 2016-17 school year out for review. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Vides.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the Park presentation by Mr. Dave Brown.
Okay.
And joining him will be Mr. Watkins, our supervisor of mathematics, and Ms. Vides will be back joining as well.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Do you need a chair, Dave?
Yeah. Now she's gone. Just go ahead and go. Just your eye, yeah, go. Just kidding. Go on over. That's why we have to go here. When we get the next reports, then we'll look at these. Snapshot.
Good evening. The fall block data has been released by MSDE. We are permitted to share it. And one of the things we're going to be talking about tonight is some of the difficulties in comparing individual administrations of the test, especially Park. We're going to share the fall block data. There's the four high school assessments. And we will do a sample parent report, or individual student report.
Can I question on that, just on that slide, comparing individual administrations? You're talking about internal Queen Anne's County or throughout the state?
Individual administrations being the fall and the spring.
The administration of, not an administration of a school?
Not the administration of the school, the administration of different testing windows.
All right, how we administer it.
We've never done this in the past. We've never broken out a test administration and shared data from one administration. Usually I report HSA data for the year, not a fall and spring report.
You mean how we administer the tests?
Right.
That's what you're talking about?
Right, in other words, Park, we administer in the fall and the spring.
Administration's as in a verb. I get it now. I know, it's funny how it's...
I kept confusing.
I'm sorry, just administration of a test is just common terminology for me. I forget that. You think of administrators, administration of the school system and that.
Yeah, thought testing.
But anyway, the HSAs we administer four times a year, so I've never come back and reported after each of those administrations. Park is twice a year currently, but it will be more often as we get further into the Park world. So the challenges of looking at single administrations like this is, on this slide, you can see we have the fall of 2014 compared to the fall of 2015. The test mode is a big factor in looking at these two tests. The fall of 2014 was the first time we gave the Park administration. It was entirely a paper pencil test at that point. This past fall, 2015, it was a computer-based test. And MSDE has just recently gone back and looked at those results and done some comparisons of what effect the mode of the test has had. Difference between fall and the spring of this current year is we've had a change in duration of the test administrations. We went from a separate performance-based assessment and an end-of-year assessment the first couple of times we have administered this test, to now a single administration. So we went from five units to three units. So it makes comparisons between the years and the different administration windows a little more difficult. Also, the fall administration, if we look at our Algebra I test, we only tested 39 students. So it's hard to look at data for 39 students and get any information. That's about 6%, 6.5% of our total number of students that we're going to be testing in Algebra I this year.
Why is that? Why is that, why only 39 students?
Because the students taking Algebra I right now are usually either students that are retaking the course, or have come to us from another system or outside of the state and have not taken Park Algebra I before and took it this fall. Most of our first-time Algebra I students are year-long students, so they took it in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
The other difficulty is English 11. The spring semester that we just had is the first time we've actually tested, I'm sorry, the fall semester. The fall block test of this year is the first time we tested English 11. They did not have one in the fall of 2014. So telling you that we can't compare it, we're going to go ahead and compare the data. Performance levels, just a reminder, there are five performance levels for Park. Level five is exceeding expectations. Level four is having met the expectations. Three is approaching expectations, and level two and one are not meeting expectations yet. To put that in terms right now is for graduation requirements for our Algebra I test and our English 10 test, our current graduation requirement for this year is students must participate in the test. So every score you see, the student is meeting their graduation requirement. Next year, when we look ahead, they will need to be a level three in order to graduate, test takers next year, or a score of 725. For college and career readiness scores, we are talking a proficiency level of four or five. So that would be English 11 and Algebra II. So those are the scores we're looking at for college and career readiness. So the Algebra I score, you'll notice I didn't put any percentages in there. I really can't break this down and tell you percentages here, other than at the very end there, the level fours and fives is less than or equal to 5%. With 39 kids, if I start putting percentages in here, if you knew a student who took the fall block test, you would probably be able to come very close to getting his score, especially if I broke it out and did subgroups. So those bands are fairly accurate, they're not exact, but you can see where we fall last year compared to this year in Algebra I. And again, we had 62 students taking it last fall, 39 students taking it this fall. It's really hard to get any kind of meaningful information with that small group of population. Moving on to Algebra II, this is a bigger population. We tested 266 students last fall, 165 students this fall. And you can see their scores there. The breakdown.
When in the fall is that done? I mean, after they've done one quarter?
They would have almost completed their semester course. So this would be students that are near completing their Algebra II course.
This was done in December. This was done in December?
It's done in December and January.
Okay, so it...
Towards December.
The semester of work.
It's their end of course assessment.
Okay, all right.
Although it's not quite at the end of the course, it's as close as...
So what are we finding why we have a lesser percent in the 4% in the green area?
In the level fours.
Sorry for my using them.
Again, keep in mind the mode effect here.
You're saying it's the computer?
The bottom one, 2014, was all pencil paper. 2015 was all computer-based. And according to MSDE, the biggest impact of that mode effect is on the Algebra II assessment, where the students actually had to put their information, all their formulas in, in an equation editor into the computer. So they had to use the equation editor to enter their information. So in my opinion, that had a huge effect on the score.
Well, had the students been working with that prior to that?
They've had some experience with an equation editor, but it's different than a word processor. Most of our students are very comfortable with word processors, but equation editors work a little bit differently.
There's no question there, teachers have incorporated the use of the equation editor from the Park website into their classroom instruction. It's not the center point of our classroom instruction, though. We still focus on math and the strategies to help students understand the mathematics when it's convenient and when it makes sense for the kids to use the program, it does. Remember, every time we put the kids into the Park prototype items online, there's no feedback mechanism. So the teachers are very careful about when they engage the students in using that platform, because a teacher can't grade it. The teacher would have to look over their shoulder and see it in the computer program. And we know that the feedback process is the most valuable part of the whole instructional process. It's limited as far as how we use it. We use a lot of the paper versions of it, and we engage the kids in the rigor levels of the test, but getting the kids in front of the computer has been a challenge. It's something that we're continuing to work through.
It's only because, I only make this point is because if this is going to count towards their graduation requirements, we've got to get this, we've got to get a handle on this.
We, I feel like we do have a handle on it.
I mean, not us, meaning the administration, the teachers, you know?
Sure.
We can't, we can't set them up for failure.
I agree. The Agile Line program that we have has a pretty robust assessment program, and next year they're adding a bunch of open-ended items that engages students in the use of an equation editor. So it's going to be something that's tied right to our platform that's going to help with this problem. This is more likely tied to getting the answer down so that folks can understand what our kids understand, more so than probably the kids don't understand it. I feel confident when we look at how our kids are doing, that they are showing performance in the class. Make no mistake, Algebra II is our toughest, is one of our toughest data points that we look at. It's the college kind of gateway class, and it's kind of the class that's most aligned to where a college readiness kid would be. So it's something that our, some of our students definitely struggle with, and we're trying to figure out ways to help them be as successful as possible.
Why can't the teachers see it? There's no way for them to, how they send all their, they send everything through to the teacher when they've done their homework and all, and...
When the students are testing, the teacher is not permitted to look at individual items on the screen.
Oh, they've seen it.
It's actually a testing violation if a student, teacher would overlook.
I know, that's frustration with a lot of parents, I get that. Even before we ever had Park, was not knowing what their kids did wrong and how to prepare their kids better for next time, because there's no feedback. Kind of a, as statistics say, that's the way to go.
It's part of testing protocol. As far as...
Means no.
Yeah. We're not hiding anything, we just, we don't have the capability to share.
No, no, no. No, I'm not making light of it, it's just, it's just how it is.
It is.
More troublesome to me than the scores here is the achievement gap.
Yeah.
The achievement gap, we have seen this achievement gap. We see it in all our assessments, all our grades, and this is something that we truly need to work on. If we look at our minority students, our Hispanic for Algebra II, our Black for Algebra II, you can see that we're struggling. Again, it's got the less than 5% mark there because we can't report scores less than that, for fear you could identify who we're actually talking about if we put those scores up there. One anomaly about this test, and I haven't seen it on any of our other scores recently, our economically disadvantaged students actually outscored our non-economically disadvantaged students on this one assessment. Again, we're talking about small population. You know, our economically disadvantaged students, there are, I think there were 34 in this group out of the 166, I think we said we tested here.
You're saying the males all passed, but the females did not? Is that what this we're seeing?
Uh, 20% of the males passed, 15.3% of the females. So we actually had a higher percentage rate of males over females in this assessment.
What's the yes/no mean?
The yes/no, for economically disadvantaged students, yes, they're economically disadvantaged, or no, they're not economically disadvantaged. And for the special ed, yes or no. They're either special ed or they're not special ed.
I understand, I understand that.
Yeah.
Do you get it?
Yes. That percentage is economically disadvantaged of the number of students that were there. That's the number of persons that's not.
Those are not percentages.
Yeah.
Passed.
So 20% of those students met or exceeded, they received a four or a five on that assessment.
They're special ed and they're not.
For males.
For males, 20% for males, yes.
Who are economically...
No, 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 no. Each block is its own.
Gender male, female.
Each block stands on its own.
Yes.
It stands on its own.
80% of the males did not make four or fives.
Okay.
15%, 15.3% of the females scored a four or a five on that assessment.
Yeah.
In English 10, you can see the breakdown for English 10. Again, this is a graduation requirement. Currently, 100% of those students are, will graduate based on this assessment because they participated in it. If this were next year, we would be looking at that, yep, the yellow and green bands would be, have met their graduation requirements.
So only 52% of the kids are going to graduate?
Uh, the yellow and green, all the way through. So we're talking about...
This one here? I thought this one wasn't.
79% right now.
That's three, that's four, that's five. So for English 10, we're counting three, four, and five.
This is three.
Yeah. It's 79.
So it's 79%.
Okay, I wasn't counting the three.
Because right now, it's level three and up is the graduation requirement.
But in two years, it's going to be four and up?
In, well, actually in four years.
Because it increments.
It's incremental. It increases about eight points a year. Right now, it's the 725 level.
Okay.
Which is at this borderline right here, and then slowly moves up across the, from three to four.
But also remember that with students, when it's the year in which they take that, so if a student takes it next year and the cut is 725, they'll always have to reach 725 in order to meet the graduation requirement. So it's just in the year, it's going to be that score for the year in which they had taken it.
Is that the same for this year, that if they took it and didn't have to pass it, they just had to participate?
If they have to retake it next year.
They've already made the requirement.
Yes.
Right.
Because it's a participation.
And also that 79% that have passed the test, I hate to use that term, but for clarity, they've passed the test, that's students that knew they did not have to pass this test in order to graduate.
It's a big factor.
That's a pretty good score for a non-required score. But again, achievement gap, achievement gap, achievement gap. In English, the female students actually outscored the male students.
No surprise.
But again, our Black population and our Hispanic population are still lower. And our special ed population is still a problem here with our English. And this, you know, we're starting to see our Farms kids drop away as well. Moving on to English 11, I can't show any comparative data for English 11 because we did not have an English 11 in fall of 2014. But for fall of 2015, you can see where we fall right now. Again, this is a CCR class, College and Career Readiness. So right now, we're talking, it's actually 56.8% of our students that took this test showed as college and career ready. There's rounding in there, so...
That's just the greens?
That's the two green, shades of green.
Is, am I correct that the 10th grade, is the, the kids that are in the 10th grade now are the ones that are required to pass, they have to pass the Park test to graduate from school, not the 11th grade?
The 10th grade, the students that are sitting in 10th grade right now. They need to take the Park 10, the English 10 course. They need to participate in that. So they would have just taken it either in the fall or just this couple of weeks ago. They need to participate this year.
And then they're satisfied the requirement?
They have satisfied their graduation requirement. They will still need to take Park 11 for their college and career readiness test. And they will need to score a four or a five on that to demonstrate college and career readiness, but it is not a graduation requirement. They will graduate no matter how.
So what year, what year will it be required for them to pass the Park test?
Students who take the English 10 next year.
Okay.
Must get a passing score, and that passing score will be the yellow band, the 725.
So that would be the class of 2019? Yes.
I think so, yes.
Yeah.
And it really doesn't matter what graduating class it is or what grade they're in, it matters when they take the course.
Okay.
So you actually could have some ninth graders that may have taken English 10 this year for some reason.
Right.
They have some 11th graders that'll take English 10.
Right.
That are taking English 10. It's when you take the course, not the cohort you're going through school with. Again, achievement gap, you know, we see that in all our assessments. With our Hispanic group has done much better with this, less of a gap here. We saw a gap with our Black students, our special ed students, and again, our economically disadvantaged students. Mark, do you have any other questions about the assessment itself or the scores, the breakout? If not, I'll go on to the reports. We've had several questions about the reports. The top half of the parent reports, the individual student reports, give level information. This is the student performance level. It also has a scale where it charts out the student's performance level on the continuum from 650, which is the lowest obtainable score, to 850, which is the highest score. And it plots out where they are in that level. It also reports our school average, our district average, our state average, and the Park consortium average. So when a parent gets this, in this case, this is actually a fall report from one of our students. You can see that the school average was a 746, the district average, 754, state was 740, consortium average, 735, and this student actually scored a 787, which put them in a level four. So it's a real quick way of seeing how your student has done within the state, the district, and the school. The lower half of the report, and this is an English report, English Language Arts, breaks it down into subcategories of reading and writing, and it scores the student in each of those subcategories. And then it breaks it down into the different subclaims here even further. So we can see this student scored a 44, while the average, Park average is a 50, the district average 53, school average 49, state average 47. So this student is less than the averages. And we can break that down and look at it and say, well, did very well in literary text. This arrow means the student did better than most students that scored a 750. This arrow means the student did better than most students that scored a 750. Informational tests broke even with the students that scored a 750. And vocabulary, this was a weak area. So, we can look right down that list and see right where that student's weak area was. If I was a parent, I'd be very curious what the student's doing with vocabulary. On the writing side, this child scored a 7, scored a 41, which is above all the averages. And did very well in written expression and knowledge of language. So, in ELA, I can see that the one weak area may be vocabulary. So, a lot of good information on this report. And on the back of the report, there is very good information for the parents on what the report means, how to use it, including the website that gives far more information on it. We are doing continuous improvement. I want to turn to my, to our content people here and see if they want to add anything at this point.
Sure. So, this is the final week of school for our teachers. And I promise you that our math department is going to be up and busy the following the last two weeks of June. Really, all grade levels, kindergarten through high school are getting together, and we're revising curriculum, we're realigning assessments, we're pulling data to look at how our kids are doing, and we're responding to it. Just want to remind you that when this year started, we didn't get any Park data until halfway through the school year. So, we didn't have a chance to respond last summer to this. So, I think that this summer, we have a good opportunity to review what we know our kids are doing, and we're going to make some adjustments to it. Lots of adjustments.
The other thing I wanted to add, and I wanted to commend Dave, Rob, and Lee, and Elaine, Dr. O'Neill, which is not here, but from the elementary side. One of the things you can't see behind this is there's a whole suite of data reports for administrators. And these folks have been working for the last three months to engage our principals in how to break down these reports, what does it mean instructionally? And then, so by the time we get the new set of data, that each of our school principals will be working with our school improvement teams to try to determine and look at those individual gaps in performance, and then start in the alignment of their school improvement plan towards the strategies that help can address that. So, there's a whole other professional development piece that they're learning, these new suite of resources in order to target individual students. And so, I commend my colleagues for that work in engaging our school principals.
Anybody else have questions, comments?
We're expecting spring data to be coming. Hopefully, by the end of June, we'll get our first preliminary reports. They will be embargoed, so it'll probably be August or end of July, beginning of August, we'll be able to actually share them. Our students continue to do great things, and we.
I just wanted to know, are we going to get a point where we're going to be comparing it to the rest of Maryland? Is that?
Yes. When we have the full year data. Problem is, only about half the school systems in Maryland do a fall block assessment, because most have year-long courses. So, about, I think it's about 12 that actually do spring block, and not all the schools within the systems do a spring block, a fall block assessment.
But yes, at the end of the year.
It's hard to get statewide data.
Yeah. But at the end of the year, you'll do comparative data.
That was the question we get.
Yes.
Where do we fit in Maryland?
Sure.
Being evaluated now in our.
Sure. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the Sellersville Elementary School principal.
Well, I'm going to ask you to do something in a very strange way, which can always say no. I would like you to approve the position that we announced, but give us time tomorrow to let the school know, but also to let the people know who did not get the position.
Yeah.
Because if we share the name now publicly, but I would like you to approve it so we can get that personal on board. But we'll send out that announcement tomorrow morning after we've had a chance to share it with the staff and also with people that didn't get it. And that, those are the people I always worry about most.
Okay. So, I need a motion to approve Sellersville Elementary School principal presented to us in closed session for the 2016-2017 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote to approve the Sellersville Elementary School principal for, presented in closed session for the 2016-2017 school year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. And.
I'm done.
Do you want a 10-minute closed session, or do you just want to?
No.
Okay. Okay. Now, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Took it.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? Hearing none, I call for the vote to adjourn the June 13 Board of Ed work session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
No.
Thank you.